It's eight o'clock. Stand and do the pledge, please.
I pledge.
Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We see no one here for public discussion. You had a chance to look at the agenda and the mandate dated September twenty-sixth. If so, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Jack.
Oh, Jack?
I didn't even hear.
I didn't see that.
He got the hand wave.
I have a second. The South Forty.
Yeah, the South Forty.
And Kyle, you seconded it.
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post. Motion carried. Claims. Everybody had a chance to review claims?
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second on the claims?
I'll second.
Is that Josh?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
I'm gonna get one more.
I should be wanting to up there for this.
Yes.
Probably a good idea. We are up to Level C road here. Do you wanna come up? Thanks.
Well, somewhere I'll find a place.
Josh.
And they hide it. You want me?
I think that's always over.
Yep.
Any more housekeeping?
Usually I get five or six more.
Right.
There you go. Doug's coming up?
I believe so, yeah. He said all right. Dick, is there anything you wanna say here, or?
Well, I've... The engineers' office has virtually abandoned that road, and they're using the signage for... to cover if there's somebody tops that hill and hits those trucks. Those trucks are nine, ten inches deep in spots. If they go in the ditch and roll their car... So I'm assuming the county's just using that to cover their liability of not maintaining that road. I'd just like to put an access so I can get from point A to point B with gates. That way, we close the gates. Somebody crosses and breaks the gates down and tries it, they've exceeded their coverage for trespassing.
Do we look into anything on the liabilities of him constructing?
Yeah, the problem I see that arise... that would arise in a situation where someone should potentially ignore the sign, or a sign that should happen to be removed for whatever reason. The... the problem would lie in the situation that an argument could be made that would be foreseeable, that if there's a bridge there, that it was under county's inspection and sufficient capacity to withstand travel across it. I think you're gonna run into a problem if you allow a private person, whoever it may be, to construct a bridge on county property. I think your safest bet would be to vacate the road. That eliminates all of the county's potential liability. It may not satisfy, you know, what... what Mr. Miller's wanting to do, but I'm looking at it from the standpoint of the board and the county. If we're not using it, give it back to the... to landlords. Now, we have a municipal tort liability act within the code that protects us in certain circumstances. The problem is, is now you know that there's going to be potentially a bridge there, and if something happens, in essence, an argument can be made that you allowed that to happen. So, I just think the safest thing would be to vacate it and send it back to, you know, the people who own each side.
That was the plan in July, and it didn't happen. Again, nothing happened. Letters were gonna go out. Didn't happen. So, my option for the bridge that I wanted expired last week. When I contacted them, they said it's pending, so I don't know if it's pending with me or somebody else. But we drag our feet when somebody doesn't wanna do anything, and nothing happened. Again.
That would be board action, then the... the board would need to take action to vacate the road, then drag it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the board... Board would need to take action, whether it would be Level B, Level C, road vacation, and I believe the last time the board spoke about this, it's on record that no action was taken. The board took no action.
I have... I guess I have issues vacating the road, considering there's people that use it to get to their land that ha... will have no access, so...
Yeah, I'm not... I'm not saying that it's the perfect solution. I'm saying it's the one with the... with the least amount of problems. I mean, you could... I think what was the recommendation from the engineers' office, leave it as is?
I really have not made any...
No recommendation.
Any recommendation I've given, you know, do nothing, classify as Level C, vacate the road, pros and cons from the county's standpoint, but...
Yeah, I just don't see the... the feasibility of allowing, you know, someone to construct a bridge. That wouldn't be... You know, it's on county property, so...
Right.
You vacate a portion of the road without vacating the whole road.
That's been done before.
Well, I like that south stretch towards your house is more of a lack of a road being there than north side of the road.
The north side it does. It has landowners that use it.
Sure.
From the... From the barricade north of the bridge to my lane, I'm the only one that has an access point on and off of it.
You're the only one that needs that south stretch.
Yes.
Yeah.
So... so could we vacate from the north side of the bridge to the south side of your place, potentially?
I'd love it, to my lane. We can go north far enough that the maintainer can pull up.
Yep.
Yep. That's perfect. 'Cause I'm the only one with access.
How far on the north side of the bridge is that nearest access? Is it...
It's right where the barricade is.
Fifty feet? Right there?
Right there is where his lane is at.
Yeah, it has to be right where the barricade's at.
Okay. Would that be something that'd be feasible?
Well, you're... you're still gonna have to have a public hearing, and...
Yeah.
You're... I mean, a landowner owns two section line, and you have a landowner that's on the west side of the road. Now, I have no idea what... what that landowner will say, but you still have to go through the process.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
That's where the center of the road, right? The center of the road and the section line are... that's where the road was established. Now, whether the physical, you know, cluster might...
If I was ITC, I might not go along with it either, because they have a high voltage transmission line that they need access to.
Well, they have easements for that, though, don't they?
They should.
They have an easement.
I mean, they'd have to.
They have an easement with the county, but they would be able to do an easement with the landowner.
No.
They probably already have an easement with the landlord. Hope that they would. That would grant egress and ingress and egress.
Yeah. I would imagine they would've had a wider one for construction and a... and a narrow one for permanent for maintenance.
Mermine, mermine.
Yep.
But I would think that that would grant ingress and egress to the nearest or closest possible.
I guess even if we had a landowner, or a power company, or anyone else that had issues with it, is there specific criteria as far as any objections stops it, or is that up to us for our decision as to whether...
It's the board's decision. It's... I would compare it to a drainage district hearing where you might have landowners that object. You might have landowners that are in favor of it. Ultimately, the trustees of drain would make a decision. Ultimately, the board has jurisdiction. The board makes a decision.
Yes. I think that's a path worth going down. I don't know. Thoughts from anyone else?
Seems satisfactory to both parties, or... As far as from the road department's perspective, maintaining and liability and all that, vacating from the barrier to his lane on the south side, does that seem like a good option?
Are you leaving the barrier in place?
Well, from... from where the barrier is, I don't know how... that's... I mean, that's kinda what I'm looking at, too.
I mean, at... at some point in time, we'd have to get down to the nuts and bolts of exact locations of where this is gonna be, but I think for today, a general direction is more so what we need. I mean, I would imagine you would have to put some stuff together for the public hearing and all that process, right, Doug?
That'd be... well, I typically do, yes.
Okay, so, I mean...
I mean, there would be... From the road department, we would still have to block off that roadway on the north end, so that people cannot... will have to say, "Road is closed," and...
All those signs are already there, are they?
They will be, and they'll stay right there, so I don't know if... if Dick's plan is to... if he wants to put a bridge, he can make an agreement with either the other landowner, but there will be what I'll call substantial barricade there that will not be able to be removed. It will keep the function of it will be to keep the traffic from going south.
Right. Now, it's just a gate, right?
No, it's a... it's a barrier. It's a...
There's a barrier there.
There's a barrier there, yes.
Like guardrail type?
Correct.
But that's why... Let the bridge out.
Yeah.
But that's why the Level C road works. Put the gates up. I don't care if you vacate, but make it a Level C road, so I've got gates that I can get through. If I have to duce hazard a barrier, doesn't make any sense to have a bridge.
Well, that... that's my point. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, but a Level C road, the board supervisors have jurisdiction. The board supervisors, Cassup County, has jurisdiction. A road vacation, the board supervisors say, "We no longer have any jurisdiction in this road." Right. That allows the landowners, from where the road came from, to retain that ownership back.
Well, my problem is, we close the road, and we don't close the north half of the road. Dick's gonna have to bridge to nowhere, 'cause there's gonna be a barricade across it. That's... that's what I'm saying. I'm having a hard time with.
That is what... that's what I am saying is...
So, what you're saying is, we'd have to move the barricade further up that road, so he can put that?
But then the landowner that owns the property on the west side has no access. So... I can't see a bridge to nowhere.
It's a good movie.
Yeah.
Well, what kind of bridge? I mean, you're just setting up a light-duty bridge, just enough to go on four wheels.
Yeah.
No. You know what they hoist the trucks on out of Pioneer? That's what I... my... that's what I have an option on at this point. It'll hold... they guarantee it to hold a hundred twenty thousand pounds, but that doesn't mean I want anybody else to drive on it.
So, Dick, if you don't want a bridge there, if we leave a barricade across the road...
Doesn't do me any good.
That's... that's... I'm asking that.
Yes, no. No, it doesn't do me any good to vacate the road and have a barrier on it.
Well, we... so what's the problem? Just close the road all the way up to the north end like we've done... like Wesley by Thornbeards. That's... that's got a gate across it, maybe?
No. That east-west road there, that's a Level B road.
You'd have the north side of Greg Albert's, north side of the river, that you would not have access. That would... that'd be the issue. Youngs would have access from Two-Sixtieth.
So essentially, we would have to Level C the north side, and then vacate the south side.
There's no sense vacating if... if you make it a Level C, 'cause if I have gates on the north side, the liability's gonna be either one way or another. Nobody's ever crashed into the barricades yet. I don't know why they go crashing down.
I don't think from a county standpoint, we can't just not have a barricade either of... of some sort, or...
That's what's there now. Right?
Something if... something if you're driving down there at night. I mean, something to warn people that, hey, this... this road is closed. Bridge out. I mean, there has to be something there.
Yeah, why not put a bridge on the private property to the east of... instead of...
I may not own the property next spring.
What's that, Dick?
The land may be up... is going to be up for sale. Its dad's estate. I may not own that land next spring.
Oh. To me, that made more sense to put the bridge.
'Cause then I'll have that bridge on somebody else's property.
Well, is this something that we can wait and see on your... your dad's estate as far as what... you know, what will happen there, and whether you can have a... a private bridge? I mean, whether that would be the better option?
I'll just... if I buy it, then I'll just go to the far east and put a semi-trac... put a semi-trailer, but I wanted something heavy enough that if something happened, nobody'd fall into the... But that's why Level C with the gates and stuff, if somebody trespasses, you're... you've got coverage, or I have liability coverage by doing that. But barricade doesn't do me a bit of good, 'cause...
And not having somebody drive across the private bridge, that's not a problem.
Well, I think where we left it in July was, you were waiting on your dad's estate in September.
Oh, no. I wasn't gonna be around in August, and I thought that the engineers said something about sending out letters, talking about vacating to the neighbors. I must...
I was thinking we were waiting until you had something settled.
Yeah. First, but...
Well, I think that's what we came to the conclusion, was that we're gonna wait to see how you came on the sale, 'cause that would answer a few questions. What about an easement? I mean, currently, right now, you know, there's an estate pending. Is it possible to work out an easement in that for any type of interest and egress to that?
As soon as somebody thinks that there could be a potential limiting of cash value coming to the... they throw up roadblocks.
But would that easement be of any... I mean, I'm not as familiar with your ground over there. It's in my neck of the woods, but that easement where you're usually crossing wouldn't be hyperdosing ground, would it?
May not be hyperdosing ground, but the problem is, is I start out twelve feet below the... the road bed.
I'm just looking at potential increase or diminution in value. I... I don't know that an easement across that area would be that, but I... that's... you're right, Dick. That's your... you know, what you would be looking at as far as approaching that from the state's standpoint, but...
It would really just be a small portion, because Dick actually, his property corner is I believe it's south of the present barricade. So, there is access to that estate property right to the north of... or, yeah, north of the barricade, so if he were to construct a bridge on the western portion of his property and of the estate, he would simply go over the bridge and go use that access and get right up on top of the road, the public road.
No clear solutions, but you know, I think that is... I don't even know if any of them are going to be any of the proposals or possible solutions. They're gonna be great, but... That's why I'm only looking at it from the standpoint of potential liability. You guys made the decisions as far as what to do.
If it would've been easy, it would've been done already. What's the board's opinion?
Well, I think it would make more sense to to wait how that estate gets reviewed out or settled, or whatever. Just simply for the fact that why... why go through all the hearings and stuff this winter and... and process of vacating or Level C or whatever, and then then have his own ground on the other side of the river where he could've just constructed a private bridge to begin with. So I... that would be my...
That's where I'm at.
Feelings on this matter.
Anybody else have a different opinion? I don't wanna see Dick have a... build a bridge and then have a barricade at the end of the bridge.
Well, I don't wanna complicate matters for him either, more. I mean, for either side of it, so it's for the county order for him as well.
I think our best option now is to do nothing until he determines whether he can buy that property or not. Anybody have a different opinion?
What if we had just basically an informal discussion, notify all the landowners along that section of the road, north end, south end, and just have a informal meeting and invite in a discussion, see if there's anything that could be worked out that just...
If you guys... if you guys don't wanna go with a Level C road with gates on it, I guess we're just wasting everybody's time to do anything more. I hate to say that, but if I have to have a barricade on the end of it, if I can't have the gates, we're just occupying your time for no good reason. But thank you for what you have done, I guess, but I don't see as we're gonna gain anything by talking to the neighbors.
Okay.
Okay. So, would I be correct in letting the record show that we did nothing on the agenda? Good. Thank you. Doug, we have a bunch of construction on the road right away.
Yes.
Thanks, Todd.
Do you guys don't record anymore?
Yeah, we are.
We all...
I just forgot to turn on the thing, sorry. Thank you for the reminder.
Yep.
Uh, we've received a couple of requests for construction in the roadway. Both of them are from the Fenton Cooperative, Telon Cooperative. The first one is just simply to bore under Thirty-Fifth Avenue to put a communication cable under Thirty Avenue from the east right away where the existing facility is and going into a property, a home there. And I would recommend the board would approve of this request.
I would move to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Josh seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried unanimously.
And the second request from the Fenton Cooperative is to bore to thirty-one oh eight Thirty Avenue. Uh, this would be coming from the... going across Thirty Avenue again, boring underneath of it, and then plowing down the roadway. Is that on the same motion? I'm sorry, it's and.
Okay.
I thought there were two separate motions. I'm sorry. The second part of that motion was to go from Thirty Avenue, go under Thirty Avenue and plow to thirty-one oh eight Thirty Avenue. And again, I would recommend that the board would approve of this as well. So, I don't know if you wanna handle it with two separate motions.
I think we can amend the motion.
Right.
If you would like how...
I'll make a motion to amend the motion and include it. Josh, you are right with that with your second.
Yes.
Was everybody on the board have any discussion on amending that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is amended to include.
Thank you. I apologize for that. So... We can sign that there, please. There, Roger. Thank you. Okay, uh, last week, Ambrose Lubenthal did stop at our office, visiting about what is required for a cro... road crossing permit for a tile, drainage district. Excuse me, drainage tile, not a drainage district. We do not have a lot of specific information on this request, other than it's going to be going from Section Three across two-hundred-seventieth Street and going through Section Ten and outletting in that drainage, it's just in Westland... Westland Township. I'm just bringing this up. If Ambrose would bring in all the required information, required from the county for that drainage district or drainage tile underneath two-hundred-seventieth Street, does the board have any reservations about giving Mr. Lubenthal verbal and approving it after the work? I don't know if it's... what the schedule is for the tile, but we've been visiting and we thought we'd just bring it up to you.
I don't have any issues with that.
I was looking at the area on my phone.
All right. Thank you. Uh, for discussion today, we... the contractor is pouring that deck south of Titanca. They are going to airport that road, and now has been closed. They are doing construction. We have some open positions. We're actually in the process. I'd offer a position for a transfer station operator and waiting to see what the reply is. Up on A sixteen, which is clear up in the northern part of the county paved road, we're gonna do some culvert liners, UV culvert liners. We've never used them before. They have been used in other counties around Iowa. They've been used in Minnesota, South Dakota quite a bit. We have three culverts actually li- South Dakota quite a bit. We have three culverts actually lined up. One of the advantages to this, if it works, would be that instead of, if we have a culvert that's in poor condition, instead of digging that up through a paved road and relaying it, tying it, backfilling and re-sir, and putting a patch on it, this would not cause all the excavation. So we're gonna see how it all works. Talked with the contractor about doing it. We got three culverts lined up up there. See how that works.
What kind of expense per culvert is that?
Uh, it came out to be about $7,500, I think, or I better know.
Is that per?
I think it was, I'm sorry.
Otherwise, just you can get back to us.
I will give you an estimated cost for what they got or what they gave me for the quote.
I was just curious.
It's pretty, by the time you start thinking about culverts, purchasing new culverts, excavation time down onto the road, it's pretty reasonable in my mind. I was directed to install child at play signs. We do not have any inventory. Child at play is not recognized by the manual on uniform traffic control. I assume you're talking about a playground ahead, which is an inappropriate, it is not as advised by the manual of uniform traffic control. We've ordered the signs. It will not be done in the 30 days that was directed, simply because we did not have a sign in our inventory. A better warning sign, hill blocks drive, is a sign that is in the manual of uniform traffic control. The purpose of that is if there is a hill that does block a sign, that can be used. We have one location in Cassous County where that is, that sign is used. And I'd just like to make the board aware of that. If you would like to talk about that more, I'd be more than willing to discuss it. But the real point is, we do not have a child at play sign.
Do we have any hill blocks drive signs?
We used the last one. Unfortunately, in this one location, it seems to be a popular sign to be stole. I don't know why, but we are seeing, I think we're replacing it for a second time.
Did you say you ordered some signs here?
We have.
What's the estimated delivery?
Six weeks? We ordered them a couple of weeks ago. Other than that, I do not have any other discussion.
Anybody have any questions for Doug? If not, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
We are up to 8:30 and we're just right on time. Decision to open the public, open the budget amendment hearing for FY 2324. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Stecker, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Josh? Do a roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Nass?
Yes.
Ractor?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Good morning.
Public hearing is open and I'll turn it over to Tammy. You want me to shut the light off?
No, I don't have another strain. I just have it.
Okay.
If anybody wants a copy, you can request a copy at our office and we'll be more than happy to get you a copy of the budget amendment. So notice of public hearing amendment in current budget, Cassous County fiscal year July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. Meeting date and time, 10/3/2023, 8:30 AM. Meeting location, Cassous County Board of Supervisors, meeting 114114 West State Street, Algonah, Iowa 50511. There will be no increase in taxes. Any residents or taxpayers will be heard for or against the proposed amendment at the time and place specified above. A detailed statement of additional receipts, cash balances on hand at the close of the preceding fiscal year and proposed disbursements, both past and anticipated, will be made available at the hearing. Budget amendments are subject to protest if protest petition requirements are met. The state appeal board will hold a local hearing. For more information, consult our website. So the changes in our budget this year requested are intergovernmental in the amount of $10,000. Charges for services, $3,200. Miscellaneous, $1,500, with subtotal revenue $14,700. For expenditures and other financing uses, public safety and legal services, $506,533. Physical health and social services, $1,500. Roads and transportation, $2,500,000. Government services to residents, $45,100. Administration, $169,799 for a subtotal of expenditures of $3,222,932. Explanation of the changes, article funds used for the ambulance purchase, LEC HVAC system, jail control panel, emergency management building, HAVIS suburb grants for election indoor security, LATCF funds for building indoor security, EMS rent, Sheriff K-9, a local grant for night vision, funds for primary election, increase in tort liability and additional postage for passports and required election mailings, NICA increases and secondary road equipment purchases. Is there any questions?
Anybody on the board have any questions on them?
The public safety dealers, is that our, you know, door panels and that kind of stuff fall into that category?
Yes, so, yeah, in the resolution, it kind of breaks it out by service area, so you can see the line items and what's underneath that. Um, so yes.
Um, yeah, I got a question. Doug, for the two and a half million dollars here, how much equipment that was ordered from last year are we still waiting to come in on?
Approximately $900,000.
On top of the trucks that we've paid for in this fiscal year?
Yes. That would be suiting them with, with the boxes, Sanders, snow equipment.
Accessories to the trucks?
Correct, yeah.
How many, what equipment is that?
Six trucks.
Is that the trucks that, including the ones that are ordered for this fiscal year?
We do not have, we do not have any more ordered. We've paid for all of them.
Well, we've paid for eight trucks in this fiscal year already, so we have six more?
No, we, we have six trucks. Those are just chassis. Six of those are just chassis. So now we have to put the boxes, Sanders, snow plows on those.
And that will be $900,000?
Uh, that's coming off the top of my head, $850,000, $900,000, yes.
So is that part of your budget for last year or not?
Yes, it was. Part of it was, yeah.
Okay, um, well, I had asked Tammy for the information of what we had left over from last fiscal year and it looks like there's about 1.4 million from our claims this fiscal year so far. It looks like we're a little over 1.1 that's spent, so that only would have another $300,000. You're saying there's $900,000 to spend for last year's purchases?
No, for this fiscal year, I guess. We have $900,000 obligated expenses and I think I made the board aware of that, that the, the $1 million budgeted amount was not going to cover obligated expenses that was at the beginning of July 1. I believe I made that
We knew we were gonna do budget.
Pretty clear last fiscal year.
I guess that wasn't included in the list of planned purchases and expenses for the new equipment line item when we went through the budget, so I.
I would disagree with that statement because you didn't listen and I didn't know, I did not know when I submitted my budget, how much equipment was going to be purchased in that fiscal year. And I disagree with your statement completed. You did not listen. So you guys, you guys went and you budgeted for the secondary road department and you did not ask any questions after I submitted my budget. And you guys did that. Now here's what we're doing. And if you, if you don't want any new equipment this year, if you don't want to replace equipment, then I, I would just say that you're going to walk down a road that is going to be difficult to provide services for citizens of Cassous County.
Any more discussion on the budget amendment? Any other comments?
Close hearing.
Do you want to make a motion to close the hearing, Jack? I have a second. Motion, closing hearing. Carter, roll call vote.
Plath?
Yes.
Nass?
Yes.
Ractor?
No.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion carried. We have a resolution number.
No.
Not approved.
Thanks, Doug.
We will need a motion to approve the budget amendment and the resolution number is 10/3/23-1 for FY 2324. Do I have a motion to that effect to approve the resolution? Motion by Plath. I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
I guess I would disagree with some of the comments that were just made. I, I don't feel $900,000 to.
I'm gonna stop you right, right now because he is not here to defend himself. We are not gonna have.
This is a discussion for the board.
But you're talking about something that you should call him back then if you have disagreement with the engineer and talk to the engineer.
I'm gonna ask my fellow board members, did anyone know we had $900,000 to spend on equipping six trucks when we went through the budget process this winter?
Anyway, we had chassis on order. As far as the equipment, I don't recall. That's not to say you didn't give us the information. I just don't recall that seeing where the $900,000 was for equipping them. I mean, at the end of the day, we can't have trucks with cold snow plows and. I mean, that's, yeah, that's unacceptable. So I mean, I have to, still have to outfit them, but I, I don't remember if that specifically was talked about or not, or what, what was discussed at that time. So.
Call for the vote.
Roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Nass?
Yes.
Ractor?
Bass?
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Ractor?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. We are up to sealed bids for the lease farm. Farm lease, I mean. Got my hand it out?
Yep.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to open the sealed bids for the lease farm owned by Cassous County. Plath made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Josh, second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to open them in order of the thing or do you want to open them in order of price?
We can open them in order.
Okay.
Don Hauser. There it is. I'll let you read them.
Okay. This first bid is from Quinn A. Dahlhauser in the amount of $314 an acre.
The next one we have is Kenny Grun.
Do you want me to read anything else or just that?
Well, we'll read the total when we figure out who wins.
Okay. Second one is Kenny Graham for $285 to the acre.
Next one we have is Cory Kicker.
Here.
Okay. I'll read it again.
Cory Kicker, $328 per acre.
The next one we have is Charlie. Read them, Phil.
Charles T., Charles Lubenthal, $72,000 a year or $331.37 an acre.
We have a family bidding against each other? Zachary Lubenthal.
Zachary Lubenthal, $336 an acre or $73,608.
$336. And the last one is Josh Rothler.
$342 per acre.
We had it in the bid form, the high three could raise their bid. So we would have Charlie and Zachary and Josh, correct?
Yes.
No, Cory.
Yeah, I think I'm right. Yeah, I think I'm right.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, last three.
Yep, so would any one of the last three like to raise their bid, except Josh, you would probably wanna raise your bid. But Charles and Zachary?
I'll bump the three fifty.
That would be Zach?
Yeah.
Anybody else like to raise their bid? Charles, you can raise your bid. Josh?
Yep, I'll do three fifty-five.
Three fifty-five?
Yep.
Three sixty.
Three?
Sixty.
Three sixty?
Yeah, I'll do three sixty-five.
Three seventy.
Who said that? Zach.
Three seventy-five. Zach.
Three seven.
Well, they have three, three eighty.
Three eighty?
Three eighty?
Three eighty-five.
Three ninety.
I'll do three ninety-five.
I ran out of room, right?
I know, I had to draw an arrow.
We got five across there. We got Josh at three ninety-five right now.
Right. I have Josh in at three ninety-five.
What's that?
Are you shaking your head?
No.
I'm, I think it's all done, correct? We were in it to Josh Raffler for three ninety-five for three years. I thank you gentlemen for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Giving gifts.
I will do that, yeah.
Well, we ha- yeah, we haven't voted on it yet.
I'll make the motion every accessory to three hundred and fifty dollars to Josh Raffler.
Plath, three ninety-five. That was.
Me, Carter's idea.
Any discussion on the motion?
You said three hundred and ninety-five an acre for three years, is that what you said?
Correct. Seeing, uh, do a roll call vote on it?
Plath?
Yes.
Nass?
Yes.
Wachter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. You are good bidders, I.
That was fun.
Just kept going.
I was waiting for Tammy to get into her auctioneer voice.
Next time.
That, that wouldn't be good.
Yep, we have time with our auditor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I showed broader this this morning, but we ordered some restricted area authorized personnel only signs that will be putting up, um, outside my office, outside any other department head's office that wants one, and then over at the election center so that it's clear what areas cannot be accessed by the public.
I tried.
Oh, okay. So, bye, thanks. Um, so we have those, um, the custodians do not wanna put nails in walls or doors, so they're gonna be using it. He said to put all of these up. So we have twelve of them. If we need more, we'll order more. They're not that expensive. Um, the door to the auditor's office, you know, when you walk around the corner and go into the auditor's office during absentee voting, that door will be closed to make it obvious that people are not to go into that door. So, um, we will have it closed during absentee voting. Once absentee voting is, is back. And then, um, we really have gotten bids for the bullet resistant glass up on the third floor. Um, the bids are not back in yet. Um, I think they've only had one response. They're still waiting on a price for one of the materials or something. So hopefully that will be on the agenda next. And then, um, I will be gone Thursday for a financial meeting with Solutions. And I think that's all I have.
Mr. Plath?
All right, Care Connection's meeting. And with the new state law this past year, I don't know if I mentioned it or not, but we had to change the makeup of our board to, to where we're forty-nine percent elected officials and fifty-one percent, um, advisory board members or I hate that's the name for it, but, um, so we did bring in another Cassoot County addition, uh, Erin Schmidt with exceptional opportunities. Uh, she's, I think she's been there for seventeen years, so she's now on Care Connection's board with me along with several others from, uh, there's seven spots for the advisory positions to sit on the board. Two of them are not filled yet. Um, and whether we have a, a meeting, let's just say only, only, um, elected officials show up, we still can have a meeting. It's just as long as we have a majority of the entire board, so. Um, regardless of the, um, we, our fund balance is four hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Um, as we've just started receiving funding against the state. We approved contracts for rights and preferred it just kind of to mention. Um, and that, a lot of updates and then introduced all the new board members and things like that, so. Um, also, I, I did have Denny Giff reach out to me in regards to, um, railings, uh, or lack of railing on the east side of the courthouse steps. I wondered if, something, I wondered about whether we could have some sort of a railing for going up into courthouse on the east side. I don't know why.
Where the planter is, you mean?
Yeah, that would kind of block the ballot box and the planter. But he wanted me to bring that up, so I don't know if there's a good solution for that.
One on the other side, though.
There is.
Yeah, are you doing the cash bids? We get ready.
Just, just got done.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, there's one on the other side, so I'd just walk up the other side, I would think, but I'd, yeah. Anyway.
I'm not opposed to it, I could look into it.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you just, I, I just don't know if there's a good, good way to put a railing on the other side or not.
Okay.
So.
I, I will talk to Lily and Ron about that and see.
Limit your access to those mailboxes.
I, I mean, I don't know if those can be moved or not too, or if they, I'll talk to them about it and see what we can do.
Sounds good.
We, we wanna make sure people don't fall, be themselves.
And then I was in touch quite a bit over the past week with, um, different people regarding pipelines as far as, um, Steve Finkel and I had to visit with Tim Whipple as well and, um, on various things, putting some thoughts together, so. But, uh, yeah, I think that, that was about all I had.
Okay.
I have the.
Huh?
Um, I didn't have any board meetings or committee reports that way, but I will print out a copy of my notes from the exit interview that we have yet to discuss and, um, have gotten legal guidance on how that can be shared, so I was going to distribute that to everyone here and maybe have it on the agenda next week or the week after to have that discussion. So. See. See what your guys' thoughts on that are, but that's all I have.
We can, we can share, we can just share information with, with the rest of the board and then go back to.
And I, and I also did talk to, or I texted Dustin, asking if he had any issue if anything was said in open session. He said no, that was fine, so. If it comes down to that, I have his permission.
I didn't have any board meetings. I had some talks with, uh, about Summit again and Navigator.
Yeah.
My navigators, they're kind of put it on hold.
In South Dakota, they have it for sure.
Yeah.
And, and they are suing companies in South, or suing counties in South Dakota. Um, Summit or Navigator because South Dakota law allows for greater jurisdiction of the counties.
Right.
Yeah, which, that would be something to be visiting with our legislators on what we can get changed this coming session, being that Summit has pushed everything back and, so it's Navigator, um, to twenty twenty-five. There, we could potentially get a lot done in the legislative session this year, which would be huge.
And I think it's important for, um, everyone who has stake in the game or involved to be contacting their state legislators.
Especially the Senate.
Yeah, well, yeah, especially the Senate.
The Senate wouldn't bring up committees.
Correct.
But, but for all the comments we got about state legislators saying it was county's responsibility, I mean.
We have a say to a point, but they have larger say.
Yes, they have a much more defined authority on it.
South Dakota law is that much clearer.
I think it would benefit any landowner in the state of Iowa to contact their legislators so that landowners have, you know, rights aren't taken away these days.
And I think a lot of landlords have the, or just people in general have the perception of their even their state senator and state representative as, oh, well, he'll never take my call, or she'll never take my call. But I'm, our legislators up here are very good about answering their phone and, and if they don't, they'll get back to you.
Yeah, well, you know, back to that point, the state representatives and one senator said it should be up to the county to fight it, well, we had no tools to use. So that was kind of a misstatement by the representative totally, which.
That's a good intent, but.
But it was an irritation factor for me because, all right, you say we have authority, no, we don't.
So, well, and that's just being, and all these questions are, are brand new to the court system, so it's, it's all, it's all new territory.
You, and you would have thought that Summit and Navigator would have done their homework in South Dakota and North Dakota and not started spending millions of dollars without an end game.
And Navigator's gotten a little smarter than Summit, whereas they're they, they haven't been just doling out money.
Yeah.
And, and hoping for the best.
They've been holding back and seeing how Summit goes before they put it all up there and eggs in the basket, but.
Yeah.
I don't know, each home got a different approach, but, yeah.
Well, we got, we got Tammy sent this letter from Capco because the sound nearly is involved, we were earlier about having to put up a hundred windmills to produce it suddenly.
So to that point, Jack, I, and I, thanks for bringing it up because it totally went over my head. I, one of the, I did call Steve Meyer again, CEO of Carbon Sync. I talked to him about the whole windmill issue. I talked to Doyle Turner, um, again, and, and the statement from the ethanol company in Wright County about needing a hundred windmills around the ethanol plant is not true. And, and so while that was what, kind of what they were presented with, so it's just, I'm not entirely blaming the ethanol plant, but it's not completely true, because we're part of the greater MISO power grid. And as long as they source that power somewhere within the grid, I mean, which is massive, it goes from Montana to Indiana to Texas to, I mean, so as long as there's somewhere source of power within that power grid, once it enters the grid, you know, it's, nobody knows where it goes, and it's just, it's just power. So, so we don't have to have a hundred more windmills in Cassoot County or a hundred and fifty windmills in Cassoot County. It's, and it can be powered by other sources of energy, it just has to be renewable energy somewhere within the power grid. So that, that was a lot better presentation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I, I asked Cap CO2 if, if they'd be interested in sending us a letter of intent as well, just so we could have the discussion and, and signing any of these is not a, doesn't hold much legal weight. It's just a, signing is recognizing that, yes, we, we are interested in working with you in the future to see if it's a possibility. And then, I mean, that kind of development office would do a large part of that.
Yep.
But, uh, yeah, so, um,
But that's something.
I think it's still something to, to look into and, and it's being argued down in the I U B hearings that you know, in the IO code states perimeter domain, it must be convenient and necessary. So one of the arguments that's being made down there during the hearings is that it's not necessary because we do have alternatives. So, and this only requires an acre of ground, compared to the old carbon sink was, I think, twenty acres. So, and, and this uses far less electricity and far less water, um, which is a, definitely a plus. Um, so.
If you want me to put that on the agenda for next week or some future time, I can.
Could you put it on the agenda sometime for us to, you know, discussion decision, sign letter of intent with Cap CO2?
Letter of intent or letter of interest?
Letter of interest, this is Rob Roy, this, or Roy, whatever his name was, his last name was Roy, from.
Be, it'd be nice to invite, um, you know, somebody from the ethanol plant in the code or to come in and talk to us and give us their perspective on whether this is something they can do.
It would be.
Here, there, you know, if there gives their two cents, I mean, whether this is something they can be, they can do. You know, get, get the, the true story instead of all this hearsay.
Well, the ethanol plants are in a hard position as far as CO2, the CEO coming in and making statements in our boardroom on what they're in favor of or not because they, they have signed easements, their companies have signed easements, I should say.
Or agreements, probably.
Valero has, not easements, I'm sorry, that was a little weird. Valero has signed agreements. And so they're not going to say something that could get them in trouble either, you know, but.
Yeah, so I don't, I mean.
I doubt that they'd come in because it'd be a conflict.
It would, it would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But ultimately, that, that's between Cap CO2 or Carbon Sync and the ethanol plant, and that's their business agreement. And I mean, that's, that's something we're really involved in, but, but nevertheless, saying that we're supportive, supportive of looking at the idea and that you're welcoming Cassoot County to do business if the opportunity arrives.
You're, you're on the economic development board now.
Josh.
I am, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be prudent to
And they, um, I know.
Do a little research and.
Yeah. I know Doyle Turner's been over there, or at least representative of his that's been over there and talked to them and met with them, so I'll follow up with, um, that office and kind of see what they've, you know, gotten from information from them, where that's kind of gone and things like that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Be, be nice if you'd come back and give us a report on anything that they've learned.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So you want, you want this on next week or the week after?
We're actually waiting a week.
Two weeks, two weeks.
Give Josh something. Anything else to come before the board? We're gonna have a long break.
Yeah.
Good.
If not, we will adjourn until ten AM and do training.
I'm turning off the recording.